I'd like to call the North Branford Board of Education Special Meeting on Tuesday, August 15th, 2023, at 7:03 PM. Welcome.
Chairman Pappalholster here.
Vice Chair Ossio.
Here.
Secretary Deanna, here. Zachary Canada.
Here.
Ken Dawson.
Here.
Jan Mortensen. Victoria London.
Here.
Let's move the slide.
For this nation's freedom and the flag of the United States of America, we salute your government, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Visitors? Say no? Okay. Consent agenda? Did everyone meet the consent agenda? Just... I'll make a motion, as soon as I get to the right page, to approve the consent agenda of the August 15th, 2023 Board of Education Special Meeting, as submitted. Discussion? Just want to congratulate our retirees and some that have spent a lot of years here.
Yes, we have two that retired, Diane Fitzgerald and Rich Jeremiah. Combined forty-seven years between the two of them. We also had, as part of our incentive for retirement, if you put in advance, so Ms. Pat Cardoza is going to retire after next year, which will be her thirty-fifth year.
Wow.
So that gives us an advance notice that we can go and look for somebody next year and get ahead of it. So thank you to all three of them for their service to North Branford.
Mary, can we make a little call on that, because I don't remember who anybody was? Um, what's Zach second?
Sorry, I said...
Second? Yeah. Sorry. That's okay.
That's all right.
Chairman Pappalholster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ossio?
Yes.
Secretary Deanna?
Yes.
Zachary Canada?
Yes.
Ken Dawson?
Yes.
Victoria London?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to pass around. We have recognition that will come up later on in my report, so I'm going to skip over that. I'm going to go to my authority to hire, and I have listed currently the teaching certified staff that have been hired to date. We still are in the process. We filled, I believe, our last position as of today, that we are now fully staffed, which is great news. If you follow the news at all in Connecticut, you can see that there's approximately twenty-five-hundred unfilled jobs right now for certified positions in the hundred-and-sixty-eight towns. So we are fairly thankful, and I want to thank the administrative team for their efforts this summer in reaching out when we did have late resignations, putting together committees, formulating questions, and then hiring some outstanding people. So if you look at the list there, we have, I believe, eleven, or three, six, twelve. Twelve teachers that were hired this summer, with two names that will join this list. So it tells you about the position, where they're going, the school, where they did their undergraduate work, where their step placement was and their salary. Any questions on staffing?
No, great. Glad you never stepped.
Daughter, graduate, she's all grown up. Did a great job, yeah. So it's exciting. We have a couple of North Branford faces coming back to us, so it's thrilling to see them come full circle and join our teachings team. Under curriculum instruction, Dr. Welch, if you want to speak to the new teacher orientation, what's going on?
Yeah, we have next week a new teacher orientation plan for those new hires that should be found new, here, that will learn session, new around district construction vision, or into district procedures, they'll hear from Sarah Alberdi, Martha Vaughn, Bruce Williams, so they'll get a smattering of kind of how everything works, and then they'll have a chance to go to their building, connect to the building principals and staff there. So we're looking forward to that opportunity. In addition to that, just to update you on professional development, both kind of what the August plans are looking like, all the principals are building their scandals or have those at this time, the final tweaks to happen, one of those first two days that are coming up in two weeks. And one highlight of that is we're going to do a district-wide K-12 panel on building thinking craft, mindset culture. It's going to be a teacher-led panel for all staff that will do the modernized learning. We rarely do that, bringing everybody together in K-12 in one session, so we're looking forward to that, and then we staff teacher-led, so we're capturing expertise of our own. In addition to that, just to highlight for you some of the summer PD that's occurred throughout the time, lots of teacher staff have been hard to push, so a lot of curriculum content and mapping updates have been done by important events at the high school and middle school and the elementary level. Those maps templates are updated and put on curriculum websites, so you can anytime upon, if they're in KESD, be updated work, put that on as soon as they're done. There's been training around CDS, that new platform, especially APs and PPTs, chronic absenteeism, getting prepared to address that issue, it's kind of statewide focus to reduce that trend in the state. We've had some teachers do AP course training for the high school level specifically. Our pre-K team has been extensive work this summer, preparing for that integrated model, updating curriculum assessment, training a lot of new materials, so they have had a team time and are ready to go with that. And a couple of staff members have done additional course training, we've got our fellowship teachers who are abroad this summer, and a couple of staff members have done some training through that, making visible coursework. And lastly, our admin team is doing a book study as well, that's like making cultures, just kind of, you know, messing together. And then the last thing I have for you, we have that new teacher evaluation, and we've been doing it before. Every year that comes across your desk. This year, again, we have the flexibility to replace, so it's a very similar evaluation event to what it was last year and the year prior. The following year, that will be made a change. So this company here in the state is running some trainings, they'll train our feedback committee, as well as administrators, on what that plan looks like. We've had some highlights of what's expected, we don't have that yet. But our plan, you have in front of you, that loads the flexibilities adopted, we have, we are piloting, focusing on some priority standards that go with the district vision for classrooms, and we're going to really focus, I believe, on them through our evaluators. The feedback in those priority areas this year is kind of, you know, diving into what we think it's going to look like next year, it's going to be more focused, more free credit observations, less of the formal write-ups, the length of things that we've been doing. Other than that, are there any questions?
Carter, do you want to just do a brief overview update of your communication with our attorney in San Diego regarding the kindergarten enrollment criteria and us getting ready for it next year, just so the board, you've heard about it, but just so you're privy to what we've done and what we've authored so far?
So as you might imagine, there's a lot of stress to families out there, their expectations changed, not for this year, but for next year, the 24 or 25 year, the change in the cutoff age for kindergarten. So some families are looking at, if your child is born in the fall, having to re-enroll in pre-k and not attend kindergarten. So that state legislature, new changes in effect, it does give the families the opportunity to request a waiver and writing to the schools, to the district, and what the state guideline at this point says is that a local district, Gerald Harrison, will assess kids, will have to come up with a comprehensive assessment on their academic readiness, emotionality, behavior, and maybe the termination is, even though the kid doesn't make the cutoff age, do we deem the child as ready? Historically, the board has not entertained bringing children in before that cutoff date. I don't know if our stance will need to change on that, so we kind of saw some guidance from attorney to see what the direction is on that. But everything I've read is still a local decision, so it's going to be up to us whether we do that.
And when we get Rebecca's...
I think that's just opening up a candle, just so you know my stance on that. A typical state...
Rebecca's response, we'll come back to the board, but just know that a flood of...
They're going to come. It's going to come, I know. My kid's ready, your kid's not ready, you don't like my kid, no. That's ridiculous. It's September one. It's a typical state move. They make a ruling, leave that gray area, so they're not the bad guys, and it's extra work on us and on you guys.
So you have to respect it too. Connecticut was one of only two states that didn't have this in place. Connecticut and Alaska were the only two. So, you know, we're really aligned with the rest of the country, Alaska's the only hole down. And there's no goal within for what that assessment or entrance, you know, checklist criteria measure is, so we have to kind of run local to make this as best and comprehensive.
But the district can also decide, right? September one is September one, and we don't evaluate?
Stay with the state.
Stay with the standard?
We can say we don't evaluate, but we can say we don't accept.
Why would we evaluate if we're not going to accept?
The guideline tells us that we have to do this.
So it's still... You're going to waste your time.
Rebecca will die of sadness, that's why.
She'll have to finesse that. She'll have to finesse that.
That's why we hired her.
Were there other towns that were already doing that in this, you know?
No.
And state, Connecticut had that measured in place, where, you know, even with our , in my time in Arizona, we maybe had one parent, you know, submit, we liked how our child, just historically, we had.
Yeah, but December 31st is way different than September 1st. Yeah. September 1st, I mean, that's a huge gap.
That's a huge gap.
Right. Right.
So Florida comes.
Florida comes.
Any questions for...
Yeah, one question, this dawned on me, is there, in this education, or sorry, educator evaluation program, is there anything that you think, like, it's missing, or, you know, it's lacking, or is it pretty much, next year it's changing anyway, I imagine, so...
Yeah, so I think any big changes that we make will be next year, if we have pre-k completely, so I think if we have the flexibility to just do some more local, do a question next time around.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make, go ahead. No, no, that's okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the North Branford Public Schools Educator Evaluation Program for the 2023-2024 school year, as submitted.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. I figured you'd go all in favor since we have to go with that one. Martha, finance reporter?
Yep. So, update on our new payroll system, actually. We are anticipating to begin parallel runs, hopefully in November, December timeframe, and we are looking to go live at this point on April 1st. Hopefully, we don't have any, you know, major bumps in the road, but at this point, we anticipate on running several parallels before we actually go live. For the 22-23 fiscal year, as you know, that just closed, and we did very well. I'll get into a little more depth in a moment, but right now, we only have eighty-seven thousand dollars in open purchase orders for the 22-23 year, and that really is a big deal, because usually, we're anywhere from two to three percent in open purchase orders. And the reason why that's important is because as these orders are, come in, and the invoices are paid, and the purchase orders are closed out, that means that there's very little that will go back to the town. So we worked really hard, and I just wanted to thank the secretaries of the buildings and in my office, because they've really done a great job this year.
Great, that's nice.
Let's see. For 22-23, I kind of go into detail of how we actually got the budget to work for 23-24. For the first time, at least since I've been here, and I think probably for a long time, the food service program was actually able to contribute a hundred thousand dollars to the board of ed's cost for health, life, and...
Oh, nice.
...insurance. So that hundred thousand dollars was able to reduce the expenditure on the board side, and thus give us more money...
That's great.
...to do some of our prepaid and purchasing that we did, and that is really where we were able to strategically make the budget work for the current year.
Can I ask a question? Did you break down when that, when the cafeteria program started increasing revenue? Like, is there a trend?
Honestly, I think it's because of the free and reduced, and we got so much back in reimbursement from the state and federal government. But hopefully, with the new changes that have been made, and things that we're doing now, we'll continue to see...
Yep.
...an increase in those revenues, and as you know, there is no more free launch for everybody, so it should be a good year to kind of get an idea of...
Yep.
Those who qualify for free or reduced will get free, and then the breakfast program will be free.
Is the breakfast program free for everyone? No, it's not.
Yeah.
It is?
Breakfast is free for everyone.
It's a new program that the state is initiating, so our food service director is working with the state to get that on board in all the schools.
Oh, that's great.
And we were serving the high school students at the end of last year, and they love coming in and getting the egg sandwiches, and it was a huge hit, so...
You can't think when you're hungry.
There you go. Who doesn't love a potato sandwich? So we're looking to build on it.
Great.
I go into more specific details on how we got the 23-24 budget to work. I can go through those briefly for you, or you can read them, I don't need to...
We can read them.
Okay, let me know if you have any questions.
Yeah.
I also did a...
Just one question, if anybody has a question from Martha on the board in the email, email the whole board so that we could all see the answer, and that way she's not getting bombarded with the same question over and over.
Thank you.
And then new this year, I also did a summary of noteworthy expenditures for 22-23. I kind of pulled out some of the things that I thought that you should be aware of, or that actually looked important to me, and again, all those things are listed out on the next two pages. I would have had budget transfers for you for the 22-23 year, but because it was a special meeting, I will have them for you next month, and we'll clean that up. For Fund 25, we started last year with 1.1 million dollars, and we spent 727,000 dollars, so right now, we have a balance of 339,000 dollars going into the 23-24 fiscal year. And again, I listed a summary of where those expenditures are, so if you need more information on those, please let me know. And then for the current 23-24 general fund, we're still very early, and as the weeks go on, we'll be encumbering more things like our district transportation, and within a month or so, we'll get an idea of where all our salaries are, and I'll be able to start to project out for next June. I did for the financial reports, because I gave you two of them from the system, the 22-23 fiscal year is in the yellowish color, and the current year is in white, just so that you don't get confused. And also attached there is a summary of our contract negotiations, but we can review that later on.
Okay. Where are we now? Who's talking about the FRC grant?
Yes. Are you finished, Martha?
Yes.
Are there any questions? I was just waiting to see if there are any questions on the business report. I'm sure you'll take some time and go through it, and then just send copies to everyone, and we'll respond. I did send an email, I believe, two weeks ago regarding the FRC grant approval. Anne Marie McCarthy, our director, is here this evening. If there's any specific questions, I'm just going to go through this in a nutshell. Each year, we would receive approximately 100 to 109,000 dollars to run our program. There are fifty-six towns in the state of Connecticut that offer FRC services. We run after-school services as well, and we have our three- and four-year holds in this building at the end of the hallway adjacent to my office. Anne Marie McCarthy reached out to local, our local state director, Candelaora, and Senator Cohen, and shared concerns with other FRC directors of the funding sources, went into detail about what some of our needs were, and Senator Cohen and Representative Candelaora stepped up and gave North Branford a very significant increase from 109,000 up to 500,000 dollars, so I want to publicly thank them. Anne Marie has a number of things that she's looking to do with those monies, they have to be spent this year, and anything is varied, from playground to playground equipment, updating the safety of the classrooms, increasing the technology for the youngsters, furniture and equipment for our birth-to-three program, and then the existing three- and four-year-olds, and then aligning curriculum with Dr. Welch and our pre-k program, so we can better service that transition when our students leave. So I asked Anne Marie to be here, one, to thank her for her efforts, and congratulate her on a significant donation. I usually don't get that much of my budget for, and I spoke with a parent, my FRC program, but she'll answer any specific questions that you may have. It's a wonderful program, we're really fortunate with what we're able to do for many families. As you know, it's on a sliding scale for payment, and it really helps many families for childcare.
So this is a one-year grant?
One year has to be spent.
So all, I'll just...
Yeah, you can ask me.
So it's a one-year grant, so do you have ideas of how you're going to spend the money?
I do, yes. Well, as Scott mentioned, we currently get funds in around a hundred thousand dollars, and we're working with that number for quite some time. So I have met with Martha, just to kind of, to some of that this regard money, and we're going to continue to keep that as our baseline, because what we do with that is it funds mostly salaries, these split between, I have preschool teachers, an educator, and I'm saying coordinator for the primary school here, so it's kind of dividing with that, and that's really as far as we're going to go with that amount of money.
Yeah.
And it works up over to tuition base, so that's a supplemental piece to help continue us with that original funding that we have. So I'm using that as my baseline for, because I have to be able to continue to sustain after this year, so I'm not looking to do anything really different to that piece. I'm looking to really put into our program things I have never been able to do for quite some time. As I've mentioned, playground, our preschool, which operates out of this building, we do have a playground out back, isn't that size, but we have very interesting, sort of, an area for children. You know, we're very crumple, we have been very crumple for quite some time, so I'm looking at this to really put us in around what other preschool programs have. I've seen what other programs have, I see what we can do with that, and also keeping in mind, I can be with the NIAC, let's say, too, we are not a NIAC-accredited program, being in the domain of court of education, we're kind of, I have not done that, but at any rate, that's always in my foresight, what we do need to do, what's out there, do a lot of research, so I'm really looking to put in that playground, everything that children of this age can really use, and keeping in mind, you know, sensory and everything like that, that really, I really want to put this up there with everybody else, so that's going to be the biggest portion of the money. I reached out to past contacts with the help of Carter and Martha and Gerald Harrison, so I'm still in the investigating stage, trying to make contacts to really see what I'm looking at for a dollar amount, which I do not have that money yet. So that would be the largest technology, we want to really boost up that in our classroom, similar to what Gerald Harrison has in their prepay classroom. Really, the worst, worst small stuff would be a whiteboard, some ID cards for the teachers, just a couple ID cards for that small teacher, direct to maybe with the children to work with that, and Bruce is going to be getting numbers for that. I would love to, I'm looking at professional development, again, spoke with Carter, see really what can, you know, what can we do for the whole district in terms of, most importantly, the elementary school teachers, and that can match up with what's going on there. So I really want to make this something that is going to be, not just for FRC, but, you know, we are, we're all doing the same thing, and early childhood is so important right now, and especially also keeping in mind birth-to-three families, making sure we're servicing them as well, and boosting that classroom up to classroom furniture. So those that are in sure, the playground, those are going to be our biggest expenses, and looking at some professional development to keep us up to what's going on in that early childhood field, as well, community outreach, I'm involved in a network of other directors within the community and outside of this community, so I've reached out to them too, so you know, what can we do and bring out a training, professional development, so that will be some other funds as well.
So basically, to sum it up, you're going to align the programs with district goals, you're going to look into a new playground and new furniture for the school, you're going to focus on technology, professional development, and looking to possibly get NIAC accreditation?
Well, no.
No?
No.
Okay.
I don't do some of that, NIAC doesn't have to have all of this.
Okay, I just wanted to kind of get us on with it, so everything but that?
Everything but that.
Got it.
Is there the, is there, like, what's the protocol before expenses are made and this sort of thing? Is there a budget oversight committee or something that goes at us?
No, it's the business office with Anne Marie McCarthy.
So I guess the only thing I'd be hesitant, or just, I guess cautious of, is if we're adding any additional operational costs into our next year's budget, that, you know what I mean?
Year over year.
Year over year, right?
Well, that's what she said, she's not going to do.
No, they'll be one-time.
They'll be their one-time expenditures.
Right, she'll operate within the 110,000, and then anything above will be playground equipment, obviously, that's a one-time expenditure, technology, one-time expenditure.
Okay.
We can't add additional personnel with that, obviously, that'll...
Okay. I didn't catch that, sorry.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve Family Resource Center Grant application to the state of Connecticut, an amount of 500,000 dollars for the 2024 fiscal year. I'm the second to that motion. Any further discussion?
Does that, does that expenditures go through, like, do we get briefed on how that is working now?
We can let you know.
Is that on your...
It does function as a grant, which is through our Fund 04, so that's where all of our entitlement grants and other things go through, so it will be within Fund 04, but I could certainly...
You break it down, it's different than normal years, is what I'm saying, it's kind of a substantial difference, as Scott called that. Okay. Thank you, Anne Marie, appreciate you being here.
We have a first and a second.
We have to vote, wait a minute, it may not work.
All in favor? Aye. Zach seconded. No, Vicky seconded. I made the motion, I made the motion, Vicky seconded.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, I was like, did we vote on this?
I'm sorry for asking me if I'm in favor. I am definitely in favor.
Okay, good.
For the record, Mary voted yes.
Mary's also in favor, all right, good.
Anne Marie, thank you, now, class dismissed.
Class dismissed, we're good.
Thanks, Anne Marie. Okay, facility summer work, I have John here this evening, I'm going to have him also speak to the building renovation project and kind of encapsulate the two of those while he's here, and then I'll get him out of here as well.
Okay.
It's been a busy summer, I can speak to sharing staff and what they've been doing. We had a crew come up here and do all the floors, shampoo all of our carpets, from different buildings, with a couple of the high school, where they're now graduates, our young kids that are, have been great to work with, and they're brought around, and they learned a really, quite a bit in the...
So John, without further ado, update the board.
We're all sort of fast-paced, the rest of the kids, a bit of a curvy building, a bit of a retarded summer. Our summer kids have to break, we have to say, kids come back every year and do a great job, we really appreciate it, and all sorts of stuff, they do a big hand, and they're still a staff, so, good for them, hopefully they're all getting ready to go back to school. Our buildings are around, about 95% complete, of course, so guys did their final push, you know, we got that speaking, everybody's back, so, you know, everything's been stripped, cleaned, waxed, sanitized, you know, every building, general maintenance repair's been done. It's been a pretty crazy HVAC year, we had a lot of major components go down at four of our schools, so we were heading into, we're heading into HVAC repair this year, you know, schools aren't getting any lumber.
Was it just wear and tear? Is it just wear and tear, like, the aging of it, or...
Yeah, Jerome Harrison's almost 20 years old now.
I'd say that's wear and tear.
The order 20 is coming on 20, so those two buildings are meeting their mechanical lifetime.
They're aging.
They're aging. Good to be at school, we had a lot of work up here, I mean, that building was only 11 years old, but still, we had a lot of work here, Tumble Valley, so we were, it was heavy HVAC repair here, unfortunately, it was just wonderful here, so a lot of our time and effort was put to those, those buildings.
Did your folks do most of the work, or did we have to get contracts?
What's that?
Did your people do most of the work, or did we have to bring people in? I'm just trying to think of the cost.
It's a 50/50.
50/50?
It's a 50/50, you know, we're, we're, I am...
That's our people, John is our people.
I am their people. It can be on every building, so I thank our HVAC contractors who worked long with us, and our electrical contractor who worked long with us, you know, if I didn't have that conjunction, it'd be really difficult, if we had to hire our people we don't know, the cost would be, been astronomical. So our firms work very well with us, which I appreciate very much, you know, that was to keep our costs down and keep our buildings running.
Do we know how that impacts the budget? Is it an unexpected cost, I mean, right, I'm just assuming, or did we have some kind of...
No, mostly, it's not sorbative, it's just, this part needs to be replaced, you know, motors need to be replaced, drives need to be replaced, it's not something that is hundreds of thousands of dollars, but those couple of thousand-dollar repairs is a bad one, but it's coming in under the cost of the maintenance budget so far, so hopefully, you know, we can maintain. We will be going, hopefully, again, I hope this year we turn around by the top, but we're going to have some capital improvement requests this year, so hopefully they give us the money towards what we're looking for.
What things are...
We are, we are having a very difficult time with our walk-in freezer and refrigerator at Tumble Valley.
Okay.
Those are going to need to be replaced, we've nursed them long enough, health department has worked long with us, long enough on those, so you're looking at $40,000 apiece.
You know, why don't you start pricing them and start greasing the wheel with town council so it's not a surprise to them when we ask for it, I mean, get those quotes and start sending emails now.
Yeah, those are very important issues, I mean, you know, if the health department comes in some days and those are done, then...
They're done, right.
We can't function.
Yeah, so let's start greasing the wheel there, and really...
Those are, those are issues coming up next year. Our energy management systems, again, I'm going to ask to upgrade those again, those are only going to save costs, and help us better manage the buildings, again, those are aging, and those have to be brought up to do that mountain as well. The Mason reboot project is starting at the junior school, they'll be there once one on the night again, they pick the grow color for going to re-point all brick, the roof work will begin in certain places that they can do over the fall, before the winter, they will continue some as the university schools in session, but the bulk of that project will be done next summer, the actual putting on of the pitch roof in the areas that is...
And that's one of our capital improvements?
That's a, that's a town project.
That's a town project.
That's a $10 million town project.
Okay.
They bonded for that.
Same thing with the move here, same with the windows, that was a real project as a part of the town project as well, but we had to remove our HVAC systems and reinstall the roof, we did find that there are two, not four, of them now at the FRC section that are our oldest ones, and they're going to need to replace, so I'm getting close on that right now.
Are there any capital projects that we have funding for that are not started?
The only capital project that we have funding for that is not, we had to postpone the continuation of the install of the unit ventilators at Tumble Valley.
That project is like, never...
It's a long week, we want to do this summer, but these HVAC problems took so much precedence this year for all the buildings that we had to put that back a little bit, we'll start that at our first shutdown, and then the winter shutdown, and then the spring shutdown will continue, and then anything that's left will wrap up.
Just be prepared, you are going to get all kinds of crap for that.
But John, just, so, for clarification, too, every classroom next door has air conditioning.
Every classroom has air conditioning.
And I know, I know exactly where it's going to go.
Every classroom has air conditioning.
You're right, you're spot on, but it's important to also know that the support that you bring in to do these assignments, these, you know, these work projects, the electricians and the HVAC people, we couldn't get that.
Those guys were tied up this year too, this year, this summer, it's been all the heat humidity, everybody, the equipment was going down across the state, everybody was physically, we actually couldn't get our alignment to that, so I can't rip anything out and know that we're not going to be able to put it back in.
Right.
So we're going to look to school vacations and do this.
Can we push to get them done at two weeks as opposed to pushing it to summer? Like, I don't, I cannot go to another budget meeting and hear about these unit ventilators.
We'll push to get them done.
I think it's, right, I can't do it.
How many are left to do?
There's, uh, ten left.
Yeah.
Ten left for the school.
No left, no left by budget.
No.
If you could do it at all, like, I'll come and help, I don't know how useful I can be, but I will help. Like, that's how badly I don't want to stay in this to get that budget.
So just another, another update.
But what they did do was you could do a big part of the electrical infrastructure this summer, so that does take a long time, but our electrical contractors able to come in and get some of that piping work, but it takes a lot of time, so that's already in place.
Okay.
And we have the transformers already here, which he's going to continue to install those, so when the time does come, the electrical component, it's not going to take as much time.
Okay.
So just us and the HVAC guy, they'll work, they'll go along with it.
Okay, that's all.
We got a promise, you will get them done.
Okay, just for the budget, for the budget.
Another update, you invited the intermediate school, you've noticed that the N B and the letters are gone, obviously it was because of the cleaning, when they did the power washing though, they sprayed the coating off of the letters, so they're going to have to be repainted, and then they damaged the vinyl, the illuminated N B sign. The good news is, is that we're going to have the sign, we'll do the vinyl over, and we're going to make the couple of connections on the N and the B, because that will make a lot of people really happy, so I may take the sign on tour to some houses around town with it plugged in. John's going to try, I'm going to ring a bell.
I think that's great around Christmas, put it in the back of the pickup.
And I'll ring a bell.
Yeah.
That's a good project. We're going to get that walkway on Monday, it will be punchless, punchless items are still being done this summer, they will continue after the start of school, there are some punchless items that will continue into next summer.
In the current?
In the current building, yes, there are large, large punchless items, it's just, that's the way they're structured now, so, but the building committee's on it, they're on the ball. We met with Gilbane to talk about if student egress into the building in this upcoming year, as you know, they went down the driveway side last year, they will start going down that way again this year, and then the walkway will be put in around the rear of the construction project, they will enter into the rear entrance.
Who's they, the students?
The students, from the north apartment of the building, they went down the main driveway section last year, they will start that way, then when they get the other walkway done, they will no longer go that way, they'll just be going behind the construction project into the rear of the school, that will be a temporary walkway.
So we met, we met with Gilbane on that, and we're requesting a five-foot path, we want it to be paved back, because the kids are not going to walk through mud in the wintertime, it's not going to be...
And logistically, they're not near construction where they could get hurt, right?
No, it's on the side of the fence. There's a buffer and there's the fence.
It's outside their construction fence, and the building committee requests a six-foot asphalt sidewalk, that's what we're getting, oak wood, drop that tree, that would work off, get that, that tree gone, so you're not, we're not falling on the kids. So, and then, you know, like I said, we're just keeping up with the construction project, they started footing the walls on the new phase three, that they call it, so that's being done, so, going to start, they did this steel erection to start sometime around October, November.
It's moving.
John, just jumping back to the facilities on high school, how did that go being the first year, you know, coming back from, you know, that first phase one, the loads you take?
Coming back, yeah.
And the preparation in the summer, you know, in the summer, so to speak.
Well, unfortunately, we, I mean, we went okay going for the end of year to, and they did come in and do a lot of, our guys cleaned the building, and so contractors were coming too, and so, best is to re-clean our whole building again, because they're working around them. Yeah, they kind of, you know, sometimes we just show all our doubts, you know, the way they're supposed to, they're doing this, and they're cleaning up after themselves, of course, that's a lot of doubt we have with Gilbane.
I guess, I'm guessing that...
Or mechanicals.
Yeah, was there any, like, surprises or unexpected kind of things?
It took us a long time to get the HVAC system balanced, but it actually worked awesome on that, you know, every morning I'd walk in, I'd open the energy management system, and I'd see my works came on, the building was running, so, everything affects the new high school, humidity, everything affects the new high school system, it's very complicated, that's thousands of points, so, everything has to balance, or our system talks to itself, and in order to cool properly, so we have to adjust that almost every day, so, that has been an ongoing issue, we had an issue with the chillers not running properly, we had an issue with the units of roof not running properly, with service tests from Trane coming, and service tests from oil company, everybody kind of meeting every week, trying to balance off the system. It's been running fairly well right now, we're over that continuous right until the start of school year, as you know, the building committee is still battling about the motor and VFT drives on the roof documents, we still have a lot of things to pay for on if they are going to warranty those VFTs running at them speeds, at those speeds that they're asking now, that's an ongoing battle again with the building committee and Gilbane and Trane.
What about some consollio purposes, everything's kind of...
Consolios, it's a whole ballgame for a nice high school, totally different school, they're getting the hang of it, they're, you know, the floors are different maintenance type over there, the building is different, but the guys are doing a great job here, and it's just, it's just for that, the guys are fitting well to the new, the new building, you know, the whole boss has worked in the church, they're, they're doing all right.
Any questions for Mr. Floria?
No.
Better for this summer, and I want to...
Thank you for all your hard work.
Your John and your leadership, yep, and to be continued, so Mr. Floria will continue to, you know, during the year...
Work around the clock.
And update us.
On those unit ventilators.
Yeah, that's all, work around the clock.
Work around the clock, we'll continue to work around the clock.
We can get a spotlight up there, right, for the unit ventilators.
John, you're dismissed.
You're sprung, really. Thank you, bye.
I'll be really brief on the summer camp, we had over 400 students enroll this summer for our summer camp, I think we do an exceptional job, there's a narrative there with, you know, some of the specifics, I'm not going to go into that, but I really get excited when I see high school kids, we had 16 high school kids working over there, seven certified staff members who work with them, that becomes like a family, and they keep coming back, even in college, and kids that are out of college come back and work, it's phenomenal. Ryan Nabrowski and Amber Lake did a great job as co-directors of the camp, and I can't thank central office, Anna who does so much, and the camp co-directors on keeping it fluid, you know, everything's done online, everything's paid online, and the kids love camp, I run into parents all the time, and I'm like, my kid loved camp, it was awesome, so we'll continue on next year, they already have a theme, they're already excited about next year, so it's all, it's all, it's all good. Martha, I think you feel the same way?
Yes, you love camp too, Martha?
I love it. Opening ceremony, as you know, we start on the 30th with the students' first day, but on the 28th, that's a Monday, we're inviting you all to a breakfast, it's going to be at the new high school, and we'll do a brief convocation, we really have cut down on the amount of time that we spend in the convocation, because we want to get, you know, 12 new teachers or 14 new teachers into the classrooms, everyone wants to get back and spend time with their administrators, so we're pretty tight, we have our special recognition, we introduce new staff members, board members that are there, we'll introduce you, have breakfast and kind of socialize, and then, you know, kick off, the kids can begin on Wednesday, obviously a three-day week, and then we have the long weekend, and we have a four-day week, which I like, I think it eases the kids...
Gets them, gets them acclimated a little this year.
And the staff, and the parents, everyone involved, so we're excited, please, please come if you're able, I know working and things, it's tough to do, but if you are available, we'd love to see you. Town manager, I don't have anything going on right now with town hall, I stay pretty to the building committee through members of that building committee, they always call me, and it's a good thing, and they're on it, so that gives me peace of mind, and they don't mince any words when there's concerns, so it's good, so, for town hall right now, we're in good shape, they're building a new police station, and I think they're busy with that, renovation project was updated, goals, that was something, I think there was going to be some different conversations about board members putting goals together, and I just, you know, what we do internally as a district, my administrative team, they do SMART goals, so I collect their SMART goals and I use them for their evaluation each year, so if it's anything that's different than what we've done in the past, last year we had a few things that we spoke about, but I wanted to share that with you, that, you know, every building, I have, actually I have Carter's in front of me right now, so with the SMART goals, there's percentiles, measured outcomes, timelines, and how we assess them, if there's something...
I think that's for their goals.
Yeah, that's there, so...
You're talking about your goals.
Right, so now, looking at...
Because I don't get to make their goals.
No, exactly, you're not writing theirs, so, with that being said, if there's certain things that you are interested in holistically, as overarching, that would, this would be the time for you to, to share, and we can come up. as overarching, that would, this would be the time for you to share and we can come up with.
So, this is a really nice segue. And we haven't discussed this with the whole board, but Marcy and I were discussing it in full transparency. It's Marcy's idea. So, which is brilliant, frankly. It is.
It's one thing I've never been called.
We want to partner with the administrators in the various schools to develop district goals. So, it's a collaboration between the board and the administrators, creating the superintendent's goals for the district so that there's more cohesiveness going through. So, the goals that you're talking about, how do we take that a level up so that when we're looking at our goals, it's not disjointed, but you can see a cascade and they all fit within? What I will ask when we're doing this project, that we get a goal from all of the board members and we get a goal from all of the schools. And when we're thinking about goals, we're thinking about actionable items with timeframes and measures. Because if you don't have those, you can't really say if they're successful or not, right? So, if you're going to say, "I want, you know, X to be better," like, what's the timeframe? And what's the measure, right? Like, what does that look like? And then we need to discuss that because we might be a little bit unrealistic because this is not our area of expertise. So, we're going to need it to be tweaked. Like, if I said, "I want test scores to go up by 50%," you'd all be like, "Well, that's great, but that's not happening." So, you could just write a big old F right there, right? But what is a reasonable measure? And what does that look like? And do we have to carve out populations while we're doing that? So, I don't know if any of the board members are prepared with goals today. I'm pretty sure they are. So, I think it would be a good time for the board to discuss preliminary goals and then take this homework assignment to the administrators and have each school think of an overarching district goal that would be appropriate. I didn't come with a goal because I may pop onto one of your goals and say, "I'm going to support that. I'm going to back that goal." So, I'm usually pretty vocal in goals and drive them. And I would like to have somebody else drive them.
Okay, so I'll ask the board members. Do you have goals that you would like to give to me that I can share with my administrative team?
I have mine.
I have a handful of ideas and one that we saw that Kim and I worked on one. But it sounds like, I'm not sure how that's worked in line with... I mean, are we putting it out now or are we discussing as goals? In the past, we used that to cohesively agree on those three or four.
And we're going to do that again. I think what Scott's asking, do we have some ideas? So that they could, so the administrators can piggyback on some of our thoughts to have kind of a foundation of knowledge?
In all frankness, I discussed this with a friend of mine who is an assistant superintendent who used to be on the board with us. And I asked how things get done in her district. Is it the board members that come up with these goals? And, you know, she said, "No, not really." She said, "They can become very, very personal when they're done by board members." And that's not ideal. And, you know, and that's when she gave me some of these ideas. And I spoke with Shawna just to make them... I mean, we can't give goals that are not attainable and are out in the field.
So, if we have our ideas and thoughts, let's pass them along to Scott, who can pass them along to the administrator because we can take those, piggyback on it, and have some cohesiveness between all of us. And then, I mean, I just want continuity, right? Like...
We're meeting next week formally. So, full day. So, however you want to do it, if you want to, if you want to hand them to me, I can take them and then I can put them all back to you so you have them.
How do you want that formatted? Do you want goal, you know, met and then measured by? I mean, like, that's a... Or do you just want a general...
Your help is... This is what I have my administrative...
For instance, I'll give you an example. One of them that we came up with was address mental health, address mental, emotional health across the district.
So, look at what I just passed you.
You know, that's a very general, you know, 15-inch roller on a wall kind of thing. But it's district-wide and it can be used across each.
So, what would success look like for that goal? Is it having one program developed for the school? Is it partnering with a mental health organization? Like, what would that be?
To further that, it's essentially using external and internal resources while remaining within budget and not exceeding costs. Identify money spent budgeted district-wide and produce report to board by November 23 with implementation plan on how to address this growing concern. Also include percentage by grade students within this population group. Brief after-action review at the end of the school year on best practices, wins, failures, and how to proceed for the following year. Meets goal, there's what you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
Under budget while meeting implementation plan as briefed and includes a minimum of three external sources.
Perfect, yeah. That's exactly what I'm talking about.
So, if you look at what I just handed to you and you go to the second or third page, you'll go across that and you'll see under the SEO, something similar to what you're speaking to with timeline, measurable outcomes, action plan. First page is probably student learning objectives, percentile.
I just like measure up all that stuff.
Yeah, so that's... First page is student outcome. Second page, we go down probably towards the bottom of that second page. You'll get into that. That's really what I think you're looking for.
And then I think, you know, to have more than three to five goals is unrealistic, right? Like, we can't give you 10 goals. So, I think we should look at it and select as a board. That's where we'll come in and select three to five goals. And she...
So, why don't you send that to me, Zach? And then I'll meet with my team. If that's one of the ones that you want to pursue, I'll bring it to the team and then we'll...
Bring all of the ideas to the team, right? And then we'll come back and we'll pick three to five as a board. And that way, we're all on the same page.
Sorry. That's okay. You got it, Zach. You scored well. No, so, do you want to leave? You're going to get them to me. And then I'm going to send them back to you. So, you have all of the ones that came to me. You don't have to do it tonight. I mean, you can email it tonight.
I was told to come. We were told to come with it.
And then we'll meet, we're going to meet next week. We'll spend time with it. I'll get everything back to you.
Perfect, and then we'll nail them down in our next board meeting in September. Is this okay with you guys? I mean, we didn't really even ask you. We kind of voluntold you. But I just, I think it'll help build a relationship with the board too so we're all moving in the same direction.
I think one thing that we're aware of that we do every year is our administrative goals are different here besides the student growth and data. For instance, I referenced mine last year. And last year, we had a knee-ask evaluation. We had a big move. Communication with parents in the city is critical. Mine was customized towards that, measurable goals in addition to SAT data. So, they are, we say you don't want to get a tan to get to, but you also don't want to just pull our eggs and want us to... There is either.
Right.
That gets really narrow.
But yours will not change from time to time. It's these holistic, big-picture district that they're going to build. We're going to work as administrative team and then they'll measure my success.
Yeah, exactly. But yeah, we understand. It should be those like targeted pieces.
Yeah, okay. I think you're clear.
Okay. Committee reports?
We have to vote on the agreements with the four bargaining units. I have passed out motions to you and there's a summary from shipment. Okay. They have that?
You don't say they have that.
They do have that?
Exactly.
Oh, it's in your financial report. So...
I'm not sure we need to go into executive session for it.
No, we have to vote on them. So, no. Those who served on the committee, I think four of you, four served, right?
Yes.
So, thank you for what I hope was a learning process and how that all plays out working with the bargaining units. I thought we were very successful in coming up with a fiscally responsible, equitable, fair agreement with all four bargaining groups. And, you know, it's part of the process. You have to go through it. And I'm pleased. So, we need your support in signing off on your hard work and putting those contracts in place.
So, I'll make motions and then we can just see if anybody has questions. I'll make a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the North Bramford Board of Education and Local 1303-228 of Council Number Four ASME Secretaries effective July 1, 2023, 2023 through June 30, 2026.
I'll second any discussion or questions.
Which group is this for, all four or just...
Nope, secretaries.
One at a time. I get it. Keep your minds active. You know what are the secretaries. You know how to vote on this.
We need to do a roll call.
Okay.
No, Shawna did.
I did.
Can I just ask first, am I allowed to vote on this? Or do I need to abstain?
I'm secretary.
Like, do they do it separately?
We're doing it separately.
Okay, so cafeteria, should I abstain now or am I allowed to? No, you can vote on that.
You can vote on that.
Oh, you can vote?
Zach has to.
Yes.
That was joking. That was my humor with Zach.
It was a wick.
That was for his own... Sure.
Chairman Papa Holter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anafrio?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Zachary Canada?
Abstain.
Kim Dawson?
Yes.
Victoria Alonso?
Yes.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the North Bramford Board of Education and Local 1303-382 of Council Number Four ASME Cafeteria Workers effective July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2026.
I'll second any discussion or questions about the cafeteria workers. All right. Roll call.
Chairman Papa Holter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anafrio?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Zachary Canada?
Yes.
Kim Dawson?
Yes.
Victoria Alonso?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the North Bramford Board of Education and Local 1303-54 of Council Number Four ASME AFL-CIO Custodians effective July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2026.
I'll second any further discussion or questions. Okay, roll call.
Chairman Papa Holter abstain. Vice Chair Anafrio?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Zachary Canada?
Yes.
Kim Dawson?
Yes.
Victoria Alonso?
Yes.
Kim, how about you make the next motion?
Okay. Where do I start? Where do I read? Do I just say the roll call?
You'll read the whole thing, to approve the collection.
Do you have that? Do you have it?
No.
I'll have it.
No, she doesn't have it.
I make a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the North Bramford Board of Education and Local 1303, 2020, Council Number Four ASME AFL-CIO Nurses effective July 1, 2023 to June 30, 2026. I need to... Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Roll call.
Chairman Papa Holter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anafrio?
Abstain.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Zachary Canada?
Yes.
Kim Dawson?
Yes.
Victoria Alonso?
Yes.
Thank you for your work and time on this summer and getting four done.
I didn't realize you didn't have it. And I just wasn't even comfortable making the motion. How do you make the motion and abstain from it? It's kind of silly.
Um, let's do new business and everything else before executive session, what do you say?
Any visitors?
Yeah, okay. Any new business? Nope.
I did go to the pension meeting.
Oh, you did?
I did.
Good, tell us about it.
It was thrilling. Our stock markets are doing wonderfully. So, it was a positive meeting, honestly. And it was my first one. It's interesting stuff to learn. I went home with some notes to look up some stuff and get a little more understanding. But it's doing well.
Okay, pension is doing well. All right. Visitors and press, abstain people that were here that started the meeting. So, I'm going to say no. Go to the board?
It's been very quiet.
Okay. Why don't we let everybody lead and make a motion to go into executive session?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session as per Section 1-225 of the Connecticut General Statutes, as permitted by Section 1-206A of the Connecticut General Statutes to discuss agenda items, VD leave request of certified staff member, and VIK 2023, 2024 superintendent goals, and 7A negotiations, which we don't need all that, but...
Yeah, no.
Abstain.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So, we really only need the two leaves.
Zach, can you have that turned off the video and just stay here?
Yeah. Yeah, just wanted to come out. Yep.
And Mary, we won't forget you, but if you want to leave, you don't have to.
You want to take a break now? Four members of the line.
Enjoy the last week of summer without the kids.
Suck it up. It's only seventy-one in here. Exactly. It's chilly outside, too. Run. Okay. Then I'd like to make a motion. Take your time. The motion's on the bottom of this thing, Mayor, that I gave you. It's on the bottom of the sheet that I gave you. I'll make a motion to approve the unpaid one-year leave of Cliff Yurkis, world language teacher at North Bramford High School.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. I'll make a motion to approve the unpaid leave of Samantha Santoro, paraprofessional at Jerome Harrison Elementary School.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, sorry. The next regular Board of Education meeting is scheduled for Thursday, September twenty-first, 2023. Now can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And we're done.